And I have a public service announcement in case of an emergency where everyone please exit the chamber, you're shooting down the right of the stairwell to the ground floor, exit the building to allow for emergency personnel attendance. Thank you very much. We'll get started in a few minutes. Just to remind everyone, we have another public safety meeting at about 6:30, so we have a head hour to proceed with this objective with one item, so if you could on the public speaking portion of the meeting, just try and keep your comments as brief as possible, so we can still have the council debate on this issue. Okay?
She's here.
She's here. We're just waiting for her to speak. Speaking of that. I'd like to close this meeting with a warning for everyone who's dressed for this. Glad to lead you to the flag to the United States of America, to be in public, which stands what my nation on your behalf, invisible, with your duty to justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment this time. Thank you, please be seated. Let's have a roll off.
Alderman Ecker.
Here.
Alderman Kuhu.
Here.
Alderman Nwelo.
Here.
Alderman Dawson.
Here.
Alderman Carey.
Here.
Alderman Davis.
Here.
Alderman Mills.
Here.
Alderman Shabbat.
Here.
Alderman Brown.
We have a forum. You're now going to enter into the public speaking portion of the meeting. Does everyone wish to speak, sign up at the podium?
Jennifer Schwartz-Burkey, we're in the Buffalo Streets and Ulster County Legislature for District 7, Governor's 1678. So many thanks to Alderman Large Jim Noble, every member of the county council, and Mayor Steve Noble, your leadership is very critical, difficult tax, sales tax sharing situation. In the past month, our speakers faced, in my opinion, an unnecessary and unnecessarily unpleasant discussion with the county executives and members of the legislature on this issue. I have been meeting regularly with the mayor, Mr. Tui, and Mr. Bryant, our county comptroller, and last weekend I had a conversation with Tommy Stambly. We are on top of this question, and I hope that based on the support that we are hearing from the town supervisors, we've been with them yesterday and last month, and the resolution that they passed in January in support of maintaining the status quo and supporting the city of Kingston, I hope it will prevail, and I thank you very much for your leadership in proposing this resolution to go to the county. I think this discussion needs to happen in front of the public. I don't believe that negotiations should be, as Mr. Reynolds said, ambush politics. I think that it is time for transparency in discussions about the burdens that our communities carry in support of the county. So as they say, as goes Kingston, so goes Ulster County. I think our supervisors understand that, I think you understand that, I think we know that the fate of Kingston is going to also hold the fate of Ulster County. So just want to thank you again for your leadership, as well as say that Kingston citizens, which I am a member of and a representative of tonight, stands firmly behind you and is prepared in the public eye to promote this cause. So thank you very much.
Thank you. May Speaker.
Mayor Noble.
It's not always a time when the mayor gets to come before you to speak, but tonight I felt it was very relevant. I think that this is a critical issue for the city of Kingston, as I do believe that residents of the city agree with me, and I know that all of you do. And so I hope that this evening, if I can just leave you with two key issues that I want to bring up, that haven't necessarily been covered very well in the media, and it's two topics that I think are critical. And clearly this evening, you understand that, the first one, you called a special meeting tonight to deal with this issue because you recognize the fact that our agreement expires at the end of this month. And at the end of this month, when this agreement expires, it is unclear what will happen. But what we know is that our city and our revenue stream is at a peak. That is not unclear. We believe that when this sales tax agreement expires, a few things could happen. The county would recognize that it could change the sales tax distributions at that time, and we are concerned about what the future will hold, starting on March 1st. And so because of that, not only did you pass a resolution last month, I hope that, or last week, this evening, I hope you will pass and give me the authority to sign a contract to be able to send to the county legislature where we stand, and how important it is that our sales tax revenue stay flat. We're not asking for more, we're asking for our sales tax revenue to stay at eleven and a half percent, as well as the towns at three. You know, the other important component that I want to bring up, and it's something that has occurred recently, and I know that our comptroller has shared with you, is that our city, over the last few years, has done an excellent job, I believe, of trying to control costs. It's not easy. When we have unfunded mandates, when we have rise in pension and healthcare costs, when we have rise in fertility rates, we're unable sometimes to make, you know, we're unable to keep up with that, and our residents can't keep up with that. And so in order to keep our tax rates as low as we can, we have made tough decisions. We've had to lay off employees, we've had to consolidate our departments, and we continue to do so. Even just recently in January, where everyone met, working with me and my administration, you all agree that we can combine our two offices of economic development and community development, saving tax area dollars. We have continued to show time and time again that we're willing to do that. So when I read on the power link that we have raised taxes thirty-nine percent over the last three years, I don't know where those numbers have come from. And so I want to stand here today and just explain to you a little bit about where we are. And I know that you may have seen these, but in case you haven't, I asked John Tui, our city comptroller, to look from 2012 to 2016, and we looked at some of our averages in terms of our sales tax increases. And I just want to pull out some key numbers for you. First, we can look at our tax levy. Our tax levy is the amount that we actually charge the residents, it's the amount that we go and collect and be able to use to fund our operations. In 2012, that number was just over fifteen million dollars. In 2016, it's just over seventeen million dollars. And if you look at just the last four years, it's a seventeen percent increase, it is not a thirty-nine percent increase, I just want to be clear. We've got the actual numbers, you can check our city budgets, as I know all of you have, because you've helped produce many of these budgets. The other piece of this, I think, is also important, is looking at our overall expenditures, going all the way back to 2012, thirty-six point six million dollars, and 2016, forty point eight million dollars. Clearly, we have grown in our expenditures, there's no doubt about that, but I don't think you can look at anyone in the city, resident, commercial business, or us as the county council and the mayor's office, and say, "Our costs are going down." It just doesn't happen. Our costs have continued to go up, and we've been able to do more with that funding. But again, if you take the four-year change over those numbers, we're looking at eleven point four-two percent. We're not looking at the thirty-four-plus percent that was pulled out and spoken to over two-hundred-and-fifty business people at the Chamber of Commerce practice this week. I'm not sure where those numbers came from, but I just want to let you know that I believe in what we do here at the city of Kingston. I believe in what you do. I believe that we all have done our best to represent the city of Kingston, and really, really focused in on what we can do to make the city better. And I know that I have partners with each and every one of you that going forward, that we can actually work together to continue to cut costs, continue to innovate, continue to do the hard work that we're going to have to do over the next couple of years, because it's not going to be easy, I think we all know that. But we need to have the county act on sales tax, we need the county to support us at our eleven and a half percent. And so again, thank you very much for convening tonight, and again, I appreciate all of your common support.
Thank you. Next speaker.
James Quigley.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I appear here tonight as the supervisor of the Town Ulster. I want to note in the record that we completely surround the city of Kingston, except for the Ulster. I'm also the treasurer of the Ulster County Association of Supervisors and Baggers, and I'm appearing here tonight in dual capacity as supervisor of the Town Ulster and as a ranking officer in the Supervisors Association on behalf of Carl Chilene. In late January, there was a Ways and Means Committee meeting at the Ulster County Legislature, at which point in time a presentation was made by Chairman Gerstein, putting forth a proposal on the sales tax sharing agreement. The proposal, for the record, said that the current eleven and a half percent allocated to the city of Kingston will be reduced to ten percent, and the three percent allocated to the towns across the county will be reduced to two percent. Collectively, an approximate two-point-seven million dollar reduction in revenues at the local level. In analyzing the analysis upon which this presentation and a decision was made, I noted a large number of misrepresentation, both in spending, the historical spending on part of the towns, and a spending on part of the city. Analysis is purported to show an increase between 2012 and 2016. And the 2012 numbers, as they stand for the Town Ulster, did not reflect the actual expenditures that we had incurred, but had reflected the appropriated expenditures that we went into at the beginning of the year on our budget. When I corrected the misstatement on a county-wide, town aggregate basis, the statement that the towns were not good stewards of the revenues that were bequeathed to us under the generosity of Chairman Heinz fell apart. Further analysis at the towns' level and the aggregate across those same years for the real estate tax levies that the towns assessed, shows that we have been responsible stewards with a point-eight-four percent increase in our assessment, our assessed real estate tax levy going from fifteen into sixteen, and a point-four-two percent increase going from fourteen into fifteen. That is not being irresponsible. A position that these actions were based upon. I've had numerous conversations with the mayor and with John Tui, and put together some numbers, which I presented to the Supervisors Association, that indicated the draconian effect on county-wide operations of all levels of government if the city of Kingston preempted the sales tax. A pattern of mutually assured destruction. This is a theory that did not work well when the United States and the Soviet Union went head-to-head, and I put forth here tonight, it is not a theory that's going to turn out nice for the collective taxpayers in Ulster County when the city of Kingston and the county of Ulster butt heads. In late January, Supervisors Association voted unanimously to support the city of Kingston in its position of maintaining the existing agreement. I come here tonight to share with you those feelings of my fellow supervisors, but I caution you that the diabolical leaders in our county are working hard to pull this coalition apart. I have heard promises made to supervisors in other parts of the county that if you change your position, we will give the towns more sales tax. I have heard promises that if this agreement is oyster on the city of Kingston, there will be no diminution in the sales tax revenues to the towns. Now, I have been affectionately dubbed the math head in the Supervisors Association because of my ability to understand the numbers. I'm asking you tonight to reinforce the numbers of the coalition that have come together to support the renewal of the five-year sales tax sharing agreement, unmodified as it stands today. Please pass this resolution tonight to keep our coalition together. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time? Give your name and address, if you'd like.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jennifer Adama. I am a proud resident of Ulster County, 115 South Ohio Road, New York. I'm very proud to be a resident of Ulster County, it is the best county in the Hudson Valley. I'm here tonight on behalf of President Billy Ricardo from CSA, one of the Southern Region vice presidents. I am also here with our local treasurer, Bob Robbins, and our executive president, Alex Tauboyzey. I'm just here to say we support the mayor, and we support Kingston, and asking you to please pass the extension of the five-year eleven and a half percent tax extension for the reason being, the services we provide to this fine city will be impacted. We will not be able to provide the services that CSA proudly provides to the residents of Kingston every day. We would be at risk to lose garbage workers, people to keep our roads clean, people to keep the passages safe, and provide vital services to our elderly, our students, our children, and our citizens of Ulster County. I don't think we want to see anyone else out of work. I think we want to be a growing economy, we want to keep our numbers strong, we don't want them to decline. So I'm asking you to please on behalf of the working people of this wonderful county, please pass this resolution and keep our members employed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm wiping the cobwebs off because I have been here quite a while, but I wanted to tell you, I was the alderman of the fourth ward back in 2001. And my name is Mary Ann Parker, and I still live by the 14th Avenue, Dear Street, Kings, New York. I'm sorry, I apologize. I went up to Rich Gerstein back in 2001, and he knows I did it because I was with Jimmy Noble, and Mr. Noble had to go out in an emergency, and several other members. And what bothers me about this whole sales tax thing is that everybody keeps talking about the safety net. Everybody's heard my big mouth on the radio about the safety net, the safety net, the safety net. Of the sixty-two counties, Ulster County is the only county where the safety net was dumped on one area, the city of Kingston. Mr. Quigley found out the zip code was a problem with it, then all the towns got interested, oh boy, everybody got interested in it, which I found very interesting. But during a ten-year period, the city of Kingston ended up, and that's the tax-paying residents of the city of Kingston, ended up paying the total safety net bill. It wasn't the county, it was the city of Kingston. Today, I read in the paper today, Mr. Heinz saying, "Oh, now that they've got sales tax, they're buying equipment, they're doing this, they're doing that." Well, I felt like we were held hostage for ten years by him, by having to put that cost on just the tax-paying residents of the city of Kingston. So gee, Mr. Heinz, it's about time we get some services for ourselves, and we fix ourselves, and bring us back to the standard we should have been at, having not had to pay for ten total years. And I told Mr. Gerstein, when I went up there in 2001, that if he even talked about putting the safety net into the sales tax agreement at that time, that I requested, we get thirteen percent. And you want to know why? Because for every half a percent, it's five hundred thousand dollars. And begins the safety net was put on us, and new residents will tell you, I used to call it a county containment dumping ground, because I still feel that it is a county containment dumping ground, and the city of Kingston is having to provide everything because we are the county seat. But we're doing a damn good job, and we look around, everything that we've had to do with the diversity and the backgrounds of the people, and all these people coming up on railways, buses, and everything, we dealt with all that. But the thirteen percent I was requesting was because for every half a percent, it's five hundred thousand dollars. So I went to see John Tui, and I said, "John, how much has the safety net come up to now?" "Over one point five million dollars." Well, figure it out, ladies and gentlemen, five hundred thousand dollars, times three, is one point five million dollars. So safety net had nothing, nothing to do with our negotiations back in 2001. And I want to make that perfectly clear, and I want Mr. Gerstein to know that. We also said that at that point in time, well, let's look at all the county buildings and properties that are off the city tax rolls, maybe it's time that they sell a few of them, put them back on the tax rolls, so that we can generate revenue from the property taxes on those properties. I think as of right now, you ought to look into that, because I think there's like thirty-four properties that are county-owned properties in the city of Kingston that are off the tax rolls. And then Mr. Cahill, or Kevin Cahill, he says, Mr. Heinz says he held him hostage the last time about the sales tax. No, he didn't. I was up in his office all the time, saying, "Put a noose around his neck." Because the people of the city of Kingston, taxpayers, should not have had to endure the safety net cost for the length of time we had to endure. The other sixty-one counties were all paying it, city of Kingston, Ulster County, but we were the city of Kingston, we were the county seat, we got stuck in the fault of the bill. And for him to say now, just because we do have a little bit of money, because Mr. Cahill and him reached an agreement, that we're spending money, was in the paper today, set my blood pressure up, because bottom line is, ladies and gentlemen, we deserve to spend a little bit of money. We provide transportation, we provide the services, we got the probation, we've got everything that he doesn't want in all his other towns, but put it in the city of Kingston, because we have the ability to transport the people, to get the people to their medical needs, to do everything to service and help the people. So I'm here tonight to tell you, I applaud you, and I hope you go and continue to fight the eleven point five percent, because we deserve to have it, because we're the ones who are providing just about everything for the county and the social services department as far as needs go. We're taking them by taxi to the medical places, we're taking them to the dentist, the doctors, we're taking them all over, and we're doing that because we're a caring community. And Midtown Kingston, which I represent, it still has a very good heart, and is full of diversity and wonderful people, and I wouldn't have wanted ever represented another section of the city, because when I grew up there, everybody opened up their doors to Midtown Kingston, and that's still true to this day of the people that I know in Midtown Kingston. So I hope that you send a message back to Mr. Heinz and Mr. Gerstein that Mary Ann Parker cleaned off her cobwebs, and is willing to speak to them about the year of 2001 up until present, because I'm willing to speak to them, because the tax-paying residents of the city of Kingston are who I still represent in my heart. And I'll tell you one thing, that we deserve to have eleven point five percent, I'd like to see us get twelve, but I'll stick with eleven point five. Have a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time? Seeing no one else, I can now declare the public speaking portion of this meeting closed. We will now enter into the quarter of committee, starting with resolution number forty-two.
Resolution of the county council of the city of Kingston, New York, supporting the memorialized resolution supporting continuation of the current Ulster County's sales tax level.
Any questions?
President Noble.
All right, Mel.
I would just like to thank Jennifer Burkey-Schwarz, Mayor Noble, Town Supervisor Jenny Quigley, Mary Ann Parker, and the CSA, CSA for your support tonight as we move forward toward this issue. Thank you.
All right. It's okay, though.
Go ahead. Speak outside.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, I think it's working now. I just want to say that this, this resolution came out of the Finance and Other Committee, which I have the honor to be chairing. We talked about this, as you all know, for many, many hours. We know that this is a very difficult situation. It's true, one could also start with comments on any issue, this is the typical time in the city of Kingston, you can only start a talk like that. But this is really something that's very, very different, and we need, it's so important, we need to be careful how we move on this. We'll be quickly into preemption, is that it's a step that, you know, they're going to run of losers in that, it's not the way to go. I appreciate all, my colleague Mary Ann has said, I appreciate all the comments that support this resolution, I think we should go forward. We need to give our negotiating team our full confidence, and we have a good negotiating team with Mayor Noble, the corporate council, our comptroller, and you also, Mr. President, we have full confidence, and you need this resolution, you know, we're the best strength behind you, shouldn't you need this? I urge the council to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Dawson.
Mr. President, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I too have to thank Mary Ann Parker, Mayor Noble, Mr. Quigley for speaking in behalf of supporting us, because this is very, very, very tough. It affects everyone, not just people in this room, it affects people that are homeowners, people that aren't homeowners, it affects us all. And I am hoping that we all stand in support of the mayor, as well as of the president, in getting this thing put to bed in the rest of the motion we can find. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, Carrie, and all right, Mr. Chairman.
I'd also like to thank all the speakers, and I think it's especially important that Mr. Quigley, that we have this support in the town, because this obviously affects more than just Kingston, there's a ripple effect that, that will affect the whole county ultimately, and I don't understand, I don't understand why the legislators can't see the people at least making this proposal, I mean, we can't say the legislators don't because we don't know how they're voting yet, but I think we all know that we're facing hard times, and the future is very difficult, and I think we're all aware of that, I mean, it's been a long time coming, but certainly, I think, one point six million dollars for us, certainly that is not, is not the answer, so, you know, I'm glad that we're staying strong, united, not just us, but all the other people in that life area, just thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sure everybody's, I'm sure the word has been thrown out here already, this is a very critical time for us, and just, like, it's having a special meeting, you know, it's obvious. Again, I thank everybody that has come out and supported us, and it's nice to see a united front, and I think that's going to be, again, very critical for us to be very united in this. You know, we stand to lose a lot, we can stand to lose jobs, we can stand to lose services. There's not a, you know, not a lot of win situations for us if this goes through. Again, I think we have to stay united, you know, myself, and I'm speaking for myself here, and I believe I'm speaking for everybody else, I certainly don't like to be characterized as irresponsible on the front page of the paper on numerous occasions, I don't think that's the case at all. I think we have been doing our diligent duty here, I've been on the Finance Committee, we've sat here till twelve o'clock at night on the budget, I think we do a great job managing our money, and, you know, for the public to be... And, you know, for the public to be told we're irresponsible for the way we allocate our money, it's simply not true, because I just, I don't like that at all. You know, I think the timing of all this has been very unfortunate. And again, I'm going to say one last time, I think unity is the key here, and we want to give Mayor Noble all, you know, all the support we can, and I do go forth and resume our arguments. Thank you.
All the way around.
I might just run with some of the other.
We had your money, we probably fixed this. Can't take a chance, I guarantee.
I have to say, Maryam Parker, she's still here, you're correct, because I got the list, and it's thirty-three county properties, and it's almost multi-million. I calculated about fifty-three million of their properties that we hold that we don't get taxes on. Fifty-three million's a lot of money, maybe we should take a percentage back from them. I'm also insulted, I was away when this first came to a head, and I read in the paper, and I was just like, what? We have strived every year, I'm going into my fifth budget, to diligently keep it, keep the taxes down low, we, there's a lot of things we could have been doing during all this. Our infrastructure fell, went to disrepair, based on we were paying the safety net cost. If we hadn't had to pay that, we might not be so far behind where we are on infrastructure. And I don't know if you realize how much we've had to bond for that, to take care of that situation. And I also want to say, Mr. Quigley, I'm glad that you guys are sticking together, I hope you stay the course, and the old cliche, or the old saying is, divided, united we stand, divided we fall. And I think we have to have to keep that in mind, because this would be dire circumstances for the city, not only for the taxpayers, but for the elderly who are still residing here. And every year, even just with the regular normal increase, they have a hard time, and now you're going to throw a sales tax in to disrupt the tax system, so yes, I definitely will be a yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. President. All right. Well.
I also want to thank, echo some of the words I heard from Supervisor Quigley, the mayor, of course, and Alden Parker. It's interesting about here, about thirteen percent, I think that would be a fair number, but I would settle to just keep it eleven-point-five. And I'm also heartened to hear a lot of unity right here among my colleagues on the council. I think, I know, Kingston has operated a very sustainable fiscal policy over the last couple administrations, and at least four sessions of the common council making very difficult decisions and running tight budgets, and I think acting very responsibly. So fiscal sustainability is one part of it, environmental sustainability is another part of it, and we're going to work on doing more savings, so we can start saving some money for infrastructure. All the way around, I think that's an excellent point, that we have battles to fight and a lot of investment to make, yeah. So the sales tax is very fair, don't, if it ain't wrong, don't fix it. Let's just keep it going the way it is, and give the mayor as much cover as he needs to negotiate a fair agreement for not just Kingston, but all the towns as well. All the towns have also acted in a sustainable way to run their towns efficiently, administer companies, and doing shared services when necessary. So we're all doing our part, and I think that's what I'm hearing here tonight, so I will be a batting best vote. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right.
I just want to reiterate some of the other comments that have been made, and really note that the numbers Heinz has presented are distorted, very inaccurate, and are unfair. And I think we need to press him on those numbers and ask for some transparency, and we need to see where he got this from, because they're just not matching the data that we have. Someone on record is calling for him to be full-credit about where he's getting this stuff. Second thing I want to say, as an aside, is that this is a major policy shift. We're two months into a new term, and it would have been far more legitimate to me to raise this issue about the sales tax if he hadn't gone on. He did, he gets into office, and here we are, talking about major change. So I think we need to keep in mind that there will be an election in the future coming, and that we're not going to forget this debate, right? This is some, this is a substantive debate that should have been had prior to the election, and here we are. So, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak at this time? Hearing no one else, I'm going to call for the vote. On favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Resolution is adopted, nine-zero. Thank you very much. Okay, I conclude the board of committees for this evening. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion. I'll second.
All day. Oppose. I give my standing in favor of the next one.